The agenda. I have an item to add to the agenda that I just found out this afternoon and it will go under for decision. Item seven H and it's the Ressau des Villes fracofone in Quebec.
What is it?
Ressau des Villes in Quebec. Anybody else have anything to add?
I just got an item for in camera but I see there's always something.
There's something in camera, so we can discuss that after.
If I may, just a question for a deputy clerk or, geez, I forget his new title, but item seven F, is that the policy by law update that I knew you were going to?
No.
No?
It went to four A.
Yes. I did not see that, got you, thank you. Just want to make sure it was on the agenda.
Yeah.
Great, thanks.
And if nothing else, motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second?
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Carry. Conflict of interest declaration, anybody have a conflict on any of the items? Hearing none, we'll proceed to number three, which is a presentation and the presentation is from Baktush Bay Industries, which is to do with oyster farming and we have two gentlemen here, Raymond Willett and Steen Gunderson. You're on.
Thank you very much for giving us the opportunity to present to you this evening. We really do appreciate it. What we'll do is we'll quickly move through what is Oyster Grow and oyster aquafarming and also include some of the economic benefits of it and so on and so forth. Please feel free to ask any questions as we move through like this to be more, less formal and more of a discussion. Okay, so first off, basically like we were saying, it's a farming system that's basically very environmentally focused, but it is also something that is designed and engineered to offer people a profitable business that they can develop and grow to whatever scale fits their needs. Our system's engineered to minimize the labor content and basically maximize the yield of high value saleable oysters in the marketplace. As you see in the slide, simple, efficient, profitable. So basically it is a very simple process to follow. We have a formula that we share with all the oyster farmers and if they follow the formula as stated, we've had 100% success in the field across many different farms. Efficient, it is very efficient because you are handling multiple bags of oysters at one point in time and again, no pesticides, it's a very environmentally friendly system, no pesticides, no fertilizers required with this type of farming, we're just harnessing the benefits of Mother Nature. It's a complete flexible system, we have a full range, not everyone has the same areas or area characteristics on their farms, so basically we have a range of products that can fill the individual needs of the client and the would be farmer. We offer a six bag system and we have in the middle of the room, just so you can see a more tactile demonstration of it, that is our Oyster Grow Pro, which carries six bags and each one of those bags on grow out will have around about 220 to 250 three inch oysters in them. We offer a four bag Pro Compact system, which again, basically more of the professional grade of product, but more compact if people have less labor available to them. And then we have the Low Pro system, which is a system that's very much more focused on someone who wants to farm on their own, so they don't want to have lots of equipment and things like that, they want to farm their own oysters and again, we've got many people that are using that and they've built viable businesses on that platform. So again, a real range that can support the individuals' needs. Six bags, as you can see, various different sizes of bags depending on the growth of the oyster. So when you go from a small seed all the way through to a full grow out, we want to contain the oysters in the bag. So the smaller mesh is for the smaller oysters growing into the larger mesh and the larger mesh, obviously more flow, more feed, you know, but faster growth. They go into a cage, as you can see, it's like a slide in drawer system, so the bags aren't actually out in the elements as such, the bags are a sleeve for the oyster and essentially in there, the cage is taking all the harsh environment. So there are other systems out there that just put the bags and attach ropes to the bags. The unfortunate side effect of that is if you have a storm, the ropes will pull on the bags and tear the bags and you can lose your crop. So you can have a lot of failure in that method.
Do you feed them? Is that what you do, you have to feed them?
No.
Or is it natural?
It's natural, it's all basically the plankton, the flow of plankton through the fishery is what's feeding them. So you're not doing any feeding, there is no pesticides, there is no fertilizers, you're just harnessing Mother Nature. As you see at the bottom of there, there's two large floats, those floats basically suspend the oysters at the top of the water column. The reason we stay at the top is that's where the water's the warmest, therefore there's the best feed. So that's where you get the fastest growth. Anchor lines, we have two different configurations that we offer with the anchor lines where they're tied to the anchors. Basically, they're tied in row format and we can do either a lateral system to a main line, so each one's independently, or we can do like a chain link assembly and that's really designed for areas where people have concerns with whales or sea mammals and things like that, you know, so they're not going to get caught up in any of the farms, so to speak. Again, sizes, we, as I said, we have the Pro, we have the Pro Compact and the Low Pro and, you know, some of the Pro is manageable with equipment or a team of two people. The Pro Compact, you can manage it solo, but some people use two and the Low Pro you can do completely independently on your own. In support of Oyster Grow, we have a full range of accessories, so birds were a large issue, we had a lot of complaints about birds on farms, people had issues with that, we looked at various different solutions, we developed a product called the Bird Away system, which is a, it's a passive kite system, so once you put it up there, basically it'll keep sea birds off your farm for up to seven acres. And actually, we've, we're getting published in Agriculture North America on that, we're getting a serial this month, so we're quite happy with that. But also in support of the practices where the guys are handling baskets for the side of boats, the boats themselves, all the equipment that you need to do the job as proficiently as possible, we also support the clients with that as well. So why use Oyster Grow? It maintains a steady submerged position underneath, so you're in that highest column of water, basically gives you the best optimized feeding. It is stable system, it promotes continuous feeding and gives you the best growth. Also, it withstands severe weather conditions too. Oysters, there is a problem in the shellfish industry, which is called secondary spat. Essentially what secondary spat is, is oyster growing on oysters, barnacles, mussels, so baby spat wanting to grow on other shellfish. And obviously for a market shellfish, you're looking to have them so they're clean in the restaurant. So the design and the principle behind this design, and this is why this patented product works so well, is periodically you will flip the oysters out of the water. So now the float is suspending them above the water and what we're doing is we're air drying and depending on your environmental conditions, this might be up to 48 hours. It doesn't kill or affect the oysters, but it basically kills and removes the secondary spat, thus keeping your crop at the highest yield. Rather than you looking to sell to a meat market, you're looking to sell to the premium restaurant, raw bar market. Easy flip platform, like we said, we have the baskets that go on there that can make it easy for you to flip and easy to work the cages. Come the winter, obviously in these regions, we have ice, so as you see, the floats have two caps on them, those caps get undone and then we basically will sink and we'll put the oyster cages on the seafloor. If there's a major storm coming through as well, we also use that technique to avoid So that's what we mentioned there, as you can see, it's on the bottom of the seabed with resting on the two floats, so the ice can grow above it and then come the spring, basically you raise them to the top and they start feeding them again. During the winter, they basically go into like a stasis where they're dormant for a period of time. Also while it's on the seafloor, you're also keeping yourself elevated from the seabed so they're not getting trapped in the mud, so if they do start to wake up and start feeding, you can get mortality there, this stops that and it also prevents crabs, starfish, things like that getting at your crop, which are predators of oysters. When you're raising up, the funnel shape in the floats allows you easily to evacuate the water, so it's engineered in such a way that basically the water will flow out and you can raise the cages very quickly. When we're sinking or raising cages, we'll be doing around about 1,000 units per day, so it's a relatively quick process. You can also have customized platforms or on the boats where you can move the cages over, as you can see, this is a pontoon boat, but we also have on the Carolina skiff, we have a platform that sits on there as well for the smaller outfits. Also you can mount harvesters and so on and so forth, sorters and things like that, so you're doing a lot of the work on the water, you don't have to be bringing it in and trucking, you can basically sort your crops at your farm and any oysters that aren't market size, you can put them back in rather than having the logistics cost. So our product consistently produces a higher quality oyster, gets top dollar. The desirable shape of an oyster is what they call three, two, one, three inches long, two inches wide, one inch deep, a deep cup is what the market's looking for and our product consistently offers a yield of a deep cup oyster and basically giving the farmer the highest value harvest. What you get from the Oyster Grow system, it basically gives us, we give you sites, assistance in site selection, we also help people with their business planning. We have a formula, it's worked hundreds and hundreds of times from various different sizes of farms. We have, we're very proud of the fact that over the 13 years with this product, we have 100% record, no one's gone out of business using our system, everyone's successfully grown their business, so that model, basically we encourage people to follow. Sometimes we can be a little bit like a nagging wife unfortunately to make sure, because we have a track record, we want to defend. Advantages, labor savings, time savings, reduced mortality, faster growth, improved yield, superior quality, and it is a proven business model. As a business system, it is successfully proven, we have hundreds of oyster farmers in various different climates across three continents, we're in Asia and Europe and we're across North America with people successfully farming with our system. It is a predictable investment and it gives you profitable results and high yields. It's a community system, so not only does your farmer grow a business, but there's also people around the periphery who support. So as the list says, we've got buoy manufacturers, you've got bolt mill builders, fabrication shops, transportation, obviously, there's a crop to be moved around, packaging, there's an awful lot of packaging around the product to support the product going to market, there's R&amp;D and there's an awful lot of other stuff as well, you can go down to your local coffee Farming with our system, basically unlike other methods of food, processing is completely natural, we like to call our product environmentally positive, there is no pesticides, there is no fertilizers and when we're talking about the positive side of things, a full grown oyster individually can filter 30 gallons of water per day, so if you look at 100 cages of that size, you're looking at them filtering around about 4 million gallons per day, down to a two micron level. If you were to put an industrial plant in to do that type of filtration, you'd be spending many millions of dollars and all you're actually doing is letting Mother Nature do, do the work for you. So our business model allows you to build a business that delivers a healthy, high protein food source for your community and export and improve the local environment. It is a plus plus, it is a win-win for everyone associated with working with our system. Back by us, Baktush Bay Industries, we've been in the agriculture and support industry for many, many years. We developed, designed and engineered the product around about 14 years ago, it is patented. We're proud of the fact that it is from the Maritimes and we're proud of the fact that we are exporting this system all over the world now. We've just opened up our first farm in Iceland, which we're quite proud of, so. We have hundreds of commercial operations and they're all successful to this point, so we're very pleased with that. We also have distributors who support the local communities as well, so, you know, there's always product close if they need support, if there is any issues. There is strong market demand for the product, there's an awful lot of opportunities offshore into the Asian markets for anyone in the fisheries industries within our region and basically we're reducing the costs of operating a business like this and helping people grow and develop their local economy. So you've only got to come to a place like Baktush or go to Prince Edward Island where you can see large farms and large organizations in the world just to see the evidence. So just very quickly, I know we're a little bit pressed for time, this particular video is available on our YouTube channel, but this shows an oyster farm that a gentleman called Armin King started up 13 years ago. He bought 50 cages. Now you can see a farm that's organized, he now has 9,000 cages, he has 25 million oysters in the water at any one point in time, he's employing 40 people. And he, you know, in the local community that we are, you know, we have many businesses like this growing. He is not our largest farm, our largest farm is 11,000 cages with just on 35 million oysters. So this is a business model that from small things develop huge opportunities. And again, you know, what's happening here is nothing other than cleaning up the water environment whilst growing one of the healthiest proteins available on the market today. Any questions?
Does anybody have any questions?
Does our local grower use your product or?
Yes.
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 That's the only oyster farm I know, so.
Yeah.
I don't know where the next closest one is.
Yeah. Well, as we were driving through your area, it's just like, look at that, look at that, you've got all these water and we're just, our eyes are popping out because the opportunities are phenomenal.
One thing you might notice when you're in an aerial shop is that there's 12 feet of water in there and the local people tell us that before you couldn't see the bottom and there's 12 feet of water, when you look, you can see the bottom. So over the years, what we've done to Mother Nature, what we've done to our waters, this is actually cleaning that data here. So that's very important, we think it's an important part, it is doing good to the community and waters and.
And other fisheries are seeing the benefits as well, you can see crab fishermen, they're putting their pots close to the oyster farm now because obviously you're creating local environments, a very healthy waterways where there's more nutrient, there's more food, therefore, you know, there's other opportunities as well, you know, it's bringing back things like sea grass and so forth.
Do you want to go first? So they're growing the salt water quite well, do they?
Yeah.
It has to have at least 15, 18% solidity.
Okay, because I know Nolan's farm is in a, we call it a lake, but it's brackish water.
It's brackish water, yeah, you can grow in brackish water. No problem.
Did you hear?
See, I thought it had to be brackish, but it don't have to be.
No, it doesn't have to be.
Your ROI, your own investment is, the first year you're oyster, you can't bring it to market if I'm understanding this right, takes a few years before it grows?
It's really in this region, it would be a, I would say you're probably more like the closer to two-year cycle, but let's say, let's say it's a three-year cycle. A lot of startups, what they do is, is they will buy seed oysters, which is ready for first year, then you can buy the various different sizes and then just grow that to market. So you don't have to get caught in this three-year cycle where you're going hungry for three years, you can get into business and get your ROI moving quite quickly.
Very good, thank you.
I'm quite interested in the easy flip platform and how it works, so the oysters are exposed to sunshine and?
Yes.
And the air?
Yeah.
And so it kills all the?
Fowling.
All the fowling.
Okay.
So if there's any, if there's any growth on the cage as well, sometimes you get like kelp and things like that and that can restrict the flow, it also removes that as well.
And you keep them out 48 hours or dependent?
Up to 48 hours in this area.
Okay. So what is the shelf life of an oyster when it's out of the water and shipped around the world?
This is where we have a huge advantage on places like the US, because our oysters go dormant in the winter, they hermetically seal, so we can have an oyster under temperature control out of the water for four months, so this gives us the export advantage. If I took you down to somewhere like South Carolina, they will grow a full grown oyster in a season, but from being pulled from the cage to being sold, that has to be done within two weeks. So really their market is a domestic market, our market opportunity is an international market. Unfortunately, or unfortunately, a lot of the economies that like to buy the oysters and bring that product in have done a very good job of impacting their own environments where they can't grow healthy seafood anymore, so that is an opportunity for, you know, our region.
Okay.
Just another question I've got.
No, go ahead.
To get the water, that's why in the winter time, you fill them with water, so it goes down and there's ice coming on top.
Yeah.
So I was thinking, to get that water out of there, I mean, do you have to dive underneath an open, something open, seems to be quite, quite a job if you have a hole down the cage just like.
No, no, we basically, what happens is we'll use a diver to sink them, so you have a boat that runs in front of them, takes the cap off and then a diver will manipulate them down, but like I say, you can do a thousand a days, very quick process. When you're hauling them up, you have a derrick, who's basically a hauler and it hauls on the main line and it pulls all the, and you pull them over that, you saw the ramp with the platform?
Saw that.
And that's basically allowing you to expel, and also you can do any servicing that you may need to do.
Perfect, sorry to hear this yet.
No, it's fine. Great presentation, just curious, what brings you guys here today? What do you, not, I don't mean to ask the, how should I say this, I don't mean to come off as rude, just what brings you here today, what can we do to help you or what are you looking for from us?
We're looking to help any communities that want to develop this as a viable industry in their locality. We have a track record of, that's basically 100% positive, where we've done this time and time again, we've got initiatives going in North Carolina and Louisiana, all across the Atlantic and even into Iceland. So my question to you guys is, driving through this area and looking at the water that you have, you know, why not you? As a community, is this an opportunity for you guys to harness what you have on your doorstep without having a negative effect on your environment? You're actually improving your environment and also creating jobs and helping build your economy.
I'm certainly glad you came, I see Charlene sitting here, so I don't know if Charlene found you guys or you guys found Charlene, Charlene found you guys. It's, I'm sure it's no coincidence, Charlene and I sit on a committee, an economic development committee for municipality in oyster growth or agriculture in general, I guess it's something we talk about a lot. So to condense it all together, basically if someone were to come to us and say, look, I want to start a business, but I don't have, you know, all the knowledge or know-how and I want to get into the oyster industry, we just plop them onto you and you guys?
And we will basically equip them and educate them so they're successful. The other thing, I openly invite everyone and anyone to come and see our facility and also we would take you on a tour of some local farms, you know, it's one thing seeing it on a video and listening to me giving a presentation, it's another thing of actually seeing it with your own eyes. It is working, people are very successful and it is a good way of building a community.
And are you 100% private business?
Yes.
Do you, how should I, do you set these companies up with a fee or do you sometimes invest in these companies yourself?
No, basically tide rises all boats, we're an equipment designer, developer and manufacturer. We want our customers to be successful, so like I say, the way, the way our approach is, is we're not, we're not looking for customers, we're looking for partners. The guy who buys 50, like Armin, is the guy who buys 9,000, so if we help them succeed, we succeed, it's a natural partnership.
One thing we want to mention is that we do have an experimental farm that we are really, really excited about doing this spring, so we can bring you along, our experimental farm and show you different stuff that would not bother anybody, any local farmer or whatever, we could bring it out, show you how it's done, have you practice with us, go up and down, show you how to sink, show you how to raise, show you how to flip, show you what we do when we do it. So this is something we're really excited about.
Yeah, that's a good point. Yeah, we've got a team coming in from Iceland, we've got some people coming in from the UK and it's like a dealership, but you can go and, you know, manipulate, work this stuff, you know, it's one thing for me to turn around and say that's easy to flip, but you know what, try it, get in the water with us and then you can pick whichever model that you like or fits best for you.
Biggest feature out of this program, there's all kinds of different systems out there and there's some that are bottom dwellers and some, but the biggest feature to the Oyster Grow system is the ability to air dry, kill fowling and bring a high quality oyster to market. That's the key, that's where you get the money. If you do it just for meat and the shell looks awful, you're not going to bring a shell that's full of fowling to an oyster bar in Toronto, because by the time they get it there and by then you go up to, you're smelling something that's not very nice, you don't sell those oysters. A high quality oyster will bring you the best return for your money, that's what the system will allow you to do.
This is very interesting, I find, sorry, in our area, lobster fish is the primary income for the majority, it's the economic driver in the area, but often you meet someone who's maybe tired and done with this whole life and wants to maybe venture off on their own and they're often looking for ideas and I'm certainly glad you guys came here and certainly made a deal starting my head.
I should blow a lobsterman down our way, we'll get into oysters also, because it's, there's a long season between the off-season and the work boat, so it enhances and they keep their people with them, so that's a way of getting into, and into the industry.
Interesting.
So one of the things that we had learned when we were talking with Nolan and Colton with the Eel Lake Oyster Farm is that, and this particular organization, there could be others, but we were introduced to your business model, the template that you, that you supply to your supplier or to your buyers?
To our partners.
To your partners, and so, thank you, so language is important. So, and it really takes the business plan component of, like if somebody's coming new and they're very interested in it, it's a template that it's really, it's not difficult to apply and it's like, it's a, it was built by you for the industry, which is really interesting and so for people that in Argyle that are looking at this particular industry, you know, and, I mean, I can't, I can't, you know, push one company, but this company does have that template and maybe others do too, but I'm just not aware of it, but that template has provided some very, I know that Nolan was very, very appreciative of that, he'd be here today, I think there was a bit of a miscommunication, I think Colton was here earlier.
We're actually going.
Yeah, so a bit of a, yeah, so I'm sure he'd have been here and had a lot to say because Nolan is pretty passionate about what he does too, so.
The essence of what you're talking about is exactly why, you know, we really defend that 100% record that we've built up over the years and there is a regime, there is a regiment that you have to follow. As Real, our CEO, says, it's Oyster Grow, it's not Miracle Grow, you do have to go out there, there is work to do, but as long as you follow the regiment, you will be successful. You know, we've not lost anyone yet and we're getting up towards 400 farms. What we classify as a farm is anyone over 200 cages, so from 200 cages to 11,000 cages is our farm distributor. So we also have a lot of clients that we see as being the hobbyists, whether in the 50 or they're, they're just starting out and see how it goes, they've also got full-time jobs as well, but, you know, for us, a farm would be 200.
If not, I would just like to thank you for the presentation, very, very interesting and very good information there for anybody who's interested, I'm sure.
Yeah.
Thanks again.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you very much.
This gets televised and so some of our residents will see your presentation online on Facebook and so it will get, it will get promoted, distributed.
Thank you very much for that. What's a cage? We'll just wait and give them a chance.
How much is a cage?
How much is a cage?
A cage, this cage right here is about a hundred and sixty dollars.
Cheaper than a lot?
Bag, so probably everything in is around a hundred eighty dollars, so they're a hundred eighty-five dollars.
Way better than I thought.
Lucy, that's cheaper than a lobster trap.
Lobster traps are one eighty-five.
Was that right? It's a lobster trap?
Yeah.
Some of them they're building over two hundred now.
We can handle that the best. For the water and everything, no? Interesting. Great presentation.
Okay, I guess we can move on to our next, our next, uh, agenda item. Which is number four, business arising for minutes. There's attachment on the first one. What, what happened to mine there?
This goes on the website, yeah?
Type ball, I can't, I can't enter that, that. I can't log into that attachment here.
Same here, just go straight to the website.
Okay, yeah, yeah. So, the welcome poll banners. I guess we just want to know where, where we're at with that. Is Chris, do you have any information on that, Chris, or?
The information that I have is that they have been sent some counselors, depending if we had, um, a contact person. For the communities that we were putting the banners in, or they have been sent to that contact person. So we're starting to distribute the button designs to those people to get approval. Uh, we have made changes on maybe two or three. And then once we get them all back, we'll be able to send it to, um, our producer to make them and then be able to put them on. So that's.
Okay, you're okay with that one? The other one is dangerous or unsightly demolition funding. And there's no, there's no attachment on that one, but.
That would be, uh, that would be my fault. I, I added to the agenda as I was going out fishing and I didn't have the template for an explanation. So I apologize to other counselors for not giving you much background. However, I did mention it, uh, in a notice of motion at the, uh, the previous meeting. It was a, oh, it's a long story. Uh, is, shouldn't be inappropriate to use past examples, uh, CEO views, like without mentioning any names, of course.
Yeah, keep the names on.
Of course. Um, so as I've mentioned many times at this table, dangerous and unsightly is a huge issue in our area. I see it in Westport, I'm sure most of you see it in your areas. In the past, there's been, municipalities have, the municipality has done their best. To help out certain residents that don't have the financial, uh, means to take care of the problems themselves, to rectify. The problems vary from, from here to here. It's, it's extreme to not extreme, uh, different situations. Every single situation has their own variables and it's hard to define it as, you know, one big problem. Whereas, uh, sometimes if it's an unsightly, it's as simple as a phone call, clean this up. You're dealing with someone who, who's understandable and, and it gets done. A lot of the times, it's either a, a financial issue or an unwillingness. And it's something I've pondered many times, how to fix and how to rectify, and it's not a simple solution. I've, I've gotten calls from all, you know, all types of opinions from people throughout Westport. Oh, what to do with this? And I've asked people, would you support your taxes, your tax money being used to clean up someone's yard? And they said, of course, you know, that's what our government's for, take our taxes and, and clean this mess up. I don't want to see this. Or this dangerous property. I don't want anyone to get hurt on this property, clean it up with my taxes. Then you'll get someone else who will say, well, no, don't use my taxes. Why should I pay for someone else to clean, clean up their mess? So it's, uh, I'm not telling any of you guys anything you haven't pondered before. It's, it's a major issue. In the past, for example, in Westport, we had a, a home that there was a financial issue. And it was unsightly and certainly fell in the dangerous category, which is why, uh, I think policy was used. To, to tear down the area as well as the municipality did what they could to help, uh, these individuals. Find a new home. Um, it, it ended up being on the same property. However, the old homestead was tore down. And the bill, obviously the municipality is not in the business of tearing down people's homes for, for free. The cost of tearing down the, the dwelling was added to their tax bill. And work has been done with these individuals to make it as, as affordable as possible. However, it is still a burden and it's maybe something they can't handle. So a lot of the times, what will happen is these homes i- in the future, I shouldn't say a lot of the times, but I forced, that's completely incorrect. Sometimes, or in the possible future, an issue like this, if the tax bill cannot be paid, what happens? Goes to tax sale. If it goes to tax sale, it comes here, it try, it attempts to be sold. Likely if it was a tore down property, if there's no immediate interest from a neighbor to, to either enlarging their own property or something like that. Often what happens at tax sale, the municipality loses money. We end up paying for it anyway. And it's a long, lengthy process and basically someone, you know, gets hurt in the process. My thoughts are, the reason this is on the agenda today is there's perhaps a chance for us to be proactive. I don't know what that looks like. I haven't even tried to think of what that would look like. I only brought it here because I would like staff, which know the ins and outs of these issues a lot more than I do. I just hear from individuals who have a hard time paying their bills. If there was some sort of program in the municipality, because we lose anyway. You know, i- if it, if we spend money on a lot and that goes to tax sale, it's, it's never that. You, I shouldn't say never, but it's not often that we, we get that full amount back. So if we're going to lose the money anyway, why not be a proactive municipality and try to help these folks out before it gets to that point, before they get evicted from their lots or, or. You know, certain situations like that. So the reason I brought this to the agenda here is to make a motion, and I am making this a motion. Uh, to have staff at least look at what they feel would work as a policy for them. That would hopefully, uh, feel more proactive than the way we do things now and possibly save time and issues in the future. This would be a costly endeavor, but endeavor, but maybe not when you look at how we've lost money at these tax sales. Over these, these lots. So I'm making a motion to have staff. Draw maybe a few different forms of what they feel like would be a policy to, uh. How should I write this? Is it tear down or rectify dangerous and unsightly premises that individuals in the municipality cannot do on their own?
That's your motion there?
I'll check it back. I may amend you because I'm not right keen on the wording itself, but I think you all understand just as.
So it's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or, or comments, Councillor Shret?
Yeah, I find it hard to, you know, jump on one side of your side of the fence without looking at what it's going to cost. I mean, how much money are we looking at? Maybe that's what you're trying to do.
That's exactly.
Trying to, they're probably just find out what's bad, which, which I'm all set with, yeah.
I'm not making a motion to have the policy made today.
No.
I'm making a motion to have staff give us some options that they feel would work.
Right.
Um, to, and maybe not, it's just not just tear down, but it's to, uh, rectify would be the better.
Maybe, maybe look at, at different municipalities, what they do, the staff would bring that back to work. Okay, I got you.
Any other comments?
Question?
Question called for, all in favor, the motion is taken by, by saying aye.
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 Condemn in aye. Motion carried.
I had a comment, but I kept it to myself.
Okay. You can still make, no?
No.
It's been, it's been passed. The next item, Department of Transportation Communications. And that is, there is an attachment to that, and I think we'll pass it on to Councillor Albright.
Sure. So I brought it up before, um, we've talked about issues with, with most of us having issues with our gravel roads. Not just our gravel roads, with brush cutting, in the wintertime with plowing, basically with, um, Department of Transportation. We've tried to invite them in for a meeting. Um, we sent a letter. We have not heard a response. Nope, no response. We gave them a timeline of thirty days. We haven't heard anything. And I think from having sat on this council, we've heard several times, several counselors say we, we get complaints from residents on a regular basis. And basically, my understanding is we're, we'd like to have a, a, some dialogue with Department of Transportation on their, you know, their grading schedule. What they plan on doing, you know, the brush cutting schedule, so that we can have something to go back to our residents with. Um, so nothing seems to be moving, and I mean, this is my fifth year on council and it's still not moving. Um, so I just kind of had been thinking about what do we do about that? Where do we, where do we go next? So they're not coming to us. So I had sent an email to, um, to Chris and I said, could we go to them? Could we, some counselors, I mean, I know it's, it's difficult for all of council to, to go all together. But I think it would be good, you know, more than just me, because I think strength in numbers is, is a good option. So I thought if some of us would be willing to make an appointment to meet with, um, the new area manager. To have a conversation about, you know, their scheduling and with the new program coming about that the province has just introduced. About, uh, gravel road upgrades, it would be nice to have some input on what's going to be done in our area. Because people are going to ask us these questions and I don't have any answers for them. So I guess I didn't put a motion on there, but I would like to make a motion, um, to see if we could set up an appointment with some council members. If, um, they are willing to go meet with the area manager of the Department of Transportation area.
That's a motion.
I'll second it.
Moving seconded. Comments?
Uh, I, I don't know it totally if that's the answer. Uh, I feel, Nicole, you're, you're dead on by what you're saying. I'm so frustrated over the whole, the issues. I went to visit this gentleman, we are EMO coordinator. I went there and I'm, that's being taped. I hope he's watching. He has done sweet nothing for us, sweet nothing. And this is two months. I've had the EMO coordinator email him again on the response. He hasn't even contacted us. I tell you what, we want to talk to his superior and we get his ass sitting on that chair right there, so we can talk to him. I'm totally fed up with this guy. He's, something's got to be done and we got to go higher than just meeting with him privately. I'm scared we won't get nowhere. We should talk to his superior and see why is this guy not responding to us. But I'm not saying what you're doing is wrong, but I think we'll have to go higher. I'm certainly upset over the whole thing.
Councillor Murphy?
If there's a, if, if they can, uh, if, if a meeting can be arranged, uh, I, I would like to go myself to support this. Because I've had issues with, and, and I've called them numerous times. And now when you call two four one five, you go to Halifax.
Oh, yeah.
It's answered in Halifax.
All the lines go there now.
Now you can't call here no more, but, but I mean, I've had issues here just the other day, that, that the, the, well, brush cutting for, for, for one. Uh, school buses in the Westport area, uh, on a corner that, that, you know, it, in the fall, that, when the, when the kids are being picked up. It's halfway dark there and, and, or just coming on, you know, and like they, they've gone right past us. The red lights. I mean, hey, this is dangerous. I've called on that and there's, nothing's been done. Zero. Had another call last week and I called again about a, a, a sign, signage that's down. This is down. An ambulance was, was going, was going on the Newell Road. Went right past, the guy was having an heart attack. Went right past the Newell Road because there was no signage to where the Newell Road was. And I called them and, and I've called them three times now and they've got it marked down. And she told me they had it marked down. That I, I, I had called. And it's still, she said, well, have it, she's going to contact the signage people to try to get this put in there. But why not do it? Like, you know, like why not do it? They tell you what you want to hear. So I would like to go to that meeting. If a meeting can be set up, I would like to be there myself. Thank you.
Councillor, Councillor Alba?
Very quickly, a quick story. Like Councillor Albright, five years ago, I was elected, so I've been a councillor for five years. Couple of months prior to the election, I was telling people I was going to run. And prior to actually campaigning, I was telling a family friend that I was thinking about it. He told me, he said, you know this pothole here, and it's on the corner of the Breakwater Road, which is the Jackeye Road. And the main, the main drag in Westport, which is Highway three, three, four. He said, if you want to vote for me, he said, sorry, he said, if you want a vote from me, do something about that pothole that's been there for years. And I thought to myself, if there's one, you know, I never forgot that. And I said, as soon as I'm elected, I'm going to take care of that pothole one way or another. Five years later, and I can promise you, it's not by lack of effort on my part, that pothole is still there. It's the most utilized road in all of Westports where all the transport trucks turn to go to the Breakwater for, for fishing purposes. And to unload from the fish plants and the lobster pound there. I've had letters sent from all business owners to all the ministers since four years, five years ago, and that pothole is still there. And I took a picture of it this morning to send another email about that one pothole. And I'm not talking about paving a road, I'm not talking about, you know, this, this big, huge hurrah. It's one pothole and it can't be fixed. And I've tried every angle and it just will not happen. I'm at wit's end. It, it's the, the phone calls I get the most for as a councillor is, is for, for roads. Be it the road itself or signage or any issues with it, by far. And, and you know, it's a provincial matter. It's not even actually supposed, it's not a municipal matter. However, I never, you know, use that as an excuse. I, I do what I can to help out. Um, but kind of like Yi said. I'm not sure what the right answer is, but if, if a few councillors want to go meet in town, I'm definitely in. It's definitely one of our biggest issues in the area.
Yeah, I, I haven't called recently, but you say you, you go to Halifax now?
Oh, yeah.
And play phone tag and get bounced directly?
Seven four two two four one five and it's.
Any of the, yeah, any of the.
It used to be in your armpit.
One, does the municipal office have a direct line to somebody? Or you, would you, Chris, if you tried, you'd do, go same, through the same route as the general public? If we could get at least a line set up that could go from the municipal office at least to their office. Then we could bring our concerns to the, I don't know if they want all nine of us to have access to, to, uh, somebody at the office. But at least the municipal office should be able to contact them.
Political representative from the municipality can't have a direct line, there's something wrong.
True.
Think the nine of us could at least.
Yeah, I would like that, but I'd love to see them bend into that.
If somebody doesn't have the courtesy after being sent a letter to come and sit in front of us here, you know what? That guy should have a boot in the ass and, and his job should be let go. I mean, come on, we're the municipality here. Don't they have the courtesy of coming and sitting down and hearing what we're hearing? Something wrong.
We're elected by the people.
Yeah.
And we try to help the people when we get phone calls and we can't get nothing done. Simple.
I'm to the point now, of course, I've been here too long probably, but like Lucy answered, that's the majority of the people come talk to me. It's a highway provincial issue. And I'm just going to go see Chris, get a pocket full of all these business cards and, and start handing them out. Every time somebody stops me in Soobees and complains about a road, I'm just going to give him Chris's card from now on. It's getting that frustrating.
Well, I've got a better one. Chris told, told somebody at, uh, Carl's store, go see Dean, maybe he can do something. The guy came to see me, that was a huge help. Maybe Glenn and me were still, couldn't believe it. So you don't know where to turn.
Any other comments?
Even in our orientation package though, that we had received at the beginning when we first became councillors, it says in there that they're supposed to meet with us. Is it annually that it says in there? I believe so. I believe so, because I remember reading that this, this time around, like the second time I'm reading it and thinking. Last forty years, we didn't see them. And I mean, we hadn't invited them, but this time at least we've invited them. It, it would just be nice to have a conversation even.
They don't care.
Could we not get to the minister, write to the minister or his deputy and ask him, you know, we have sent this request? Did, uh, Chris, did Chris send, uh, a CC to the deputy minister or to the minister?
We wouldn't have sent it that high. We would have remained in the, we would remain in the local, but you know, local MLAs would have been copied. Um, you know, we had a, a visit from the deputy minister, uh, not.
Yes.
Four months ago.
The tri-unit, yeah.
Um, in the tri-unit, uh, meeting and he was very accommodating, he was very open and, um, you know, uh, from our perspective. From staff's perspective, we don't have an issue contacting the deputy minister if, if the, you know, because that's, you know, um, staff to staff. because that's, you know, um, staff to staff. If this council wishes to step it up a notch, and I mean, quite frankly, we have not received even an acknowledgement that we have sent a letter, even saying something along the lines of, we can't meet with you this month, maybe in two months. Anything would have been, so at this point, you know, we've always, always been told by former area managers that give us the courtesy to deal with the issue first, before you send letters to the minister. And I thought that was a fair comment from a staff person. You've done that as council, so you, you, you can absolutely write to the minister. Um, and we can absolutely contact the deputy minister if that's your wishes.
I think we should.
I think we should, because this guy is not, is not moving.
I think we owe it to our constituents.
Yes, we do.
Yeah.
To step it up a notch.
We've done, we've tried everything right. It don't seem to be working, so let's try a little more.
So let's vote on the first one, then I'll make a motion for the next one. Yeah, because we have a motion here that says, you know, that we will get some councillors to meet with them, that we will go to them. So this is the motion that's on the floor right now. So that's what we have, and it was seconded. So that's what we have to vote on at this point. So if you're ready for the question on that motion.
Yes.
All in favor, who signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrimined, nay? Okay, so that motion, so that means that you are going to try to set up a meeting where some of us go to his office, have an appointment.
Yes.
Okay, so, Councilor Dr. Ross said you had another.
So I'll, I'll make a motion that we write a letter to the, the minister and the deputy minister, is that who we wanna address?
Yeah.
Regarding this subject that we've just been talking about.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. No discussion. Question call for, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrimined, nay? Carried.
Thank you.
And CC all the, uh, local MLAs and MPs and?
Right.
Mm-hmm. And councillor priorities number five, progress report. You've all had a chance to look at it.
Yep.
Any questions, any comments? This is just for information. Okay. So, the next one is the financial report. And I will turn Marcia's mic on.
Right.
You're on.
So attached is the financial report, March thirty first, two thousand seventeen, showing a surplus of a hundred and ninety-eight thousand, hundred and seventy dollars at the year end. Um, if we're to look at some of the larger variances under the revenues on page four, the, one of the main ones, of course, the de-transfer tax, um, you see a surplus of almost fifty-six thousand dollars. That one has been an ongoing all year. On page five, you will see a surplus of eighteen thousand dollars for the Wellington turbines. Um, this being our first year, we budgeted really low as we were unsure when the project was going to begin and how much volume it's gonna produce. Um, under returns on investments, those are higher than budgeted. Um, you see the Westpamnico sewer account. This one used to be recorded under the capital reserve, and now it is under the operations. So that one is showing there. Um, also the de-tran, the tax sales surplus, sorry. Um, some of the previous year's interest had not been transferred, therefore we had done, we have done it this year. Um, under extraordinary revenues, the, on the second line, you'll see Argal Historical Society Other. That is the society that had, um, received funding that we had not budgeted for. And this was for the archive's microfilm scanners that they wanted to purchase, that they have purchased. So the expense for this is shown under the courthouse capital expenses, so that just, that revenue just went against that expense. Um, moving on to expenditures on page seven. Um, I've combined some of seven and eight, um, legislative, administrative, um, and IT. These are surplus of over forty-eight thousand sixty-five dollars. Many of these budget lines are not really known during the budget process, therefore often they can be set higher, just to be sure. Um, you'll see under legislation, legislative, that there is some savings under council and warding travel. Also, the Fall UNSM is usually always budgeted for all the councillors, however, this year only half attended. Um, on page eight, halfway down the page, employer benefits. Most of these savings is due to the position vacancies and the gap before a new person was hired, therefore the benefits and CPP and stuff was not, not needed. Um, on page nine, under grants to organizations, you will see the Mariners Centre Operational Grant, the actual is over budget. This is their prior year deficit funding that was approved by you guys previously. Um, on page ten, under EMO miscellaneous, um, you'll see, um, a deficit of thirteen thousand four, forty-seven. Um, this is one hundred percent the cost of the drought. That's where we reported all of the drought costs. Um, also on page ten, you'll see under property inspection, um, the bulk of this surplus is due to the two positions, the building inspector and the facility maintenance positions that were vacant for a period of time. Uh, moving on to page eleven, the airport is showing a surplus of twenty thousand dollars. These two budget lines are contingencies in case they're needed and they were not used. Um, page twelve, um, at the bottom, there's some surplus in solid waste. There was less volume disposed than anticipated, and these numbers are always hard to budget as they're not usually known year to year. Um, if you look under page thirteen, under doctor recruitment, there's a thirty thousand dollar, three thirty-one surplus showing, um, there was thirteen thousand was the amount that was budgeted as a contingency that was not used. Um, we also received repayment number two of two from Dr. Greg Tibodo. He had not finished his, what is it called?
Resignment?
Placement. Therefore had to repay the recruitment.
Okay, we'll do what that was.
Grant that we had given out. So we had gotten fifty, sixty thousand from him in the prior year, and the remaining fifty-three from him this year, and then two-thirds of that amount was reimbursed to the town and to the municipality. And at the bottom, you'll, I just wanted to point out the only other item, um, was at the very end on page seventeen, the negative one hundred thousand you see transferred to the cap reserve. That is the transfer that had already, had already been approved by council. So if there's any other questions?
Anybody have questions? Councillor Thret?
I got four, five, but they'll be quick. They'll be quick. Uh, they'll be quick. Revenue from other sources, extraordinary revenue, twelve thousand. We're at, we're ahead with that. Uh, the reason for that is?
That if you look, um, if you look on page.
Yeah.
Just get it here. Page five.
Yeah.
If you see the twelve thousand, ten thousand seven hundred and seventy-two of that is the funding that the Argal Society received for the marketing.
That's what that is, okay. You just, yeah, it was over. Got it.
Yep.
I see that home care, could I keep on a percentage of money?
Yes.
Home care board expenses, twelve hundred dollars, but we, we didn't use that, so we do pay for the board expenses o, on home care? I thought they had a budget of their own, I didn't know we, we put money for their expen, for expenses for the board.
Yeah, um, actually, we were not aware of this, but maybe Alan would have a better idea of explaining it better as he was in contact with home care about this issue.
That'd be just a question I had.
So we would receive, it's, it's actually that we received that amount and didn't. So we, every year we would receive that twelve hundred dollars, and what it was doing was, was paying the municipality for the services of the board members, uh, which Calvin is one of them.
Yeah.
And so what happened was every year we get this twelve hundred dollars to reimburse, because we're paying our councillors, right? So, uh, so, and reimbursed us a, a portion of that. So, um, that policy ended last year without our knowledge.
Okay.
So, um, I think what they intended to do, and I think it was just a miscommunication, uh, the town and municipality approached home care, saying that they didn't require representation anymore, like it shouldn't be councillors anymore, should be members of the public. So, so that was changed, but we weren't made aware of that. So we won't see that again.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, the other one, Marcia, uh, I got the EMO salary stipend.
Yes.
At eighty-two hundred dollars.
Yes.
So last year, uh, that person was doing a campaign, doing a campaign, so do they get paid when they're, I don't think they do get paid. They had to take a, a leave of six, six weeks, I believe of six weeks. But with six weeks, she was still, that person was still paid eight thousand dollars, so there's only two hundred dollars there. Do you, would you know what, why that would be? Because if I do a little bit of calculation, should have been about, we should have saved about seven fifty bucks. If they had taken that six weeks, four to six weeks off, but we still paid eight thousand out of eighty-two, and it's a stipend? As it was overtime or something?
We, uh,
It's a stipend, though.
The, the, the answer to that is that another person was paid to assist us during that period. So that individual was not paid for the services, for EMO services during that period, but we did engage a gentleman from Eastpamnico to help us with the water distribution, and he was paid a portion of that stipend.
There you go. And the last and final question is, uh, the senior safety grant budget, five thousand dollars. And, uh, it seems we're, we're in a, in a, is it a negative forty-six fifty, and then if we find that again? Senior safety grant budget. Can I find that quickly? So we've got five thousand, already seen, we got nine thousand.
Yes.
So did we get more than we, i, is it something that happens every year, which is a one-time thing, or?
It has happened the last few years, but it's one of those things that
You take it.
It's gonna happen. It's, we get paid that portion of the senior safety coordinator's, uh, salary from Prime Provision. But we don't know if we're gonna get that every year, it's depending on their budget. So we don't really budget it in, but the last few years we've had this each.
Which is good, right. It's a blast, we got it. Thank you, that's all I have.
Anybody else? If not, we need a motion to accept. Is that it? The motion to approve, to accept the report.
It's normal.
Seconded?
Question.
Question call? Well, you have a question. I thought you were calling for the question.
The audit budget, when are we expecting, August probably, or earlier than that?
Uh, jeez, I hope earlier. I mean, they'll be coming in, in, two.
You're confident this is close to what's?
It's close. There's a couple of pluses and minuses that, uh, could still occur. We've asked, for instance, we've asked, uh, for funding support from the Department of Municipal Affairs for the drought situation. We've not received any sort of confirmation on that, so that may or may not be recorded in the previous year. We may actually only record it in the new year, depending on what happens. So, things like that, there's still some, um, uh, to and fro. Um, we should be presenting very soon, uh, the year end for the capital budget, which will give you more information around what happened in, in, in that fund as well. So we hope to do that for you, uh, by the next meeting.
Question on the motion?
Question on the motion. Questions in call for, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrimined, nay? Carried. Okay, item seven, support for cancer unit in Yarmouth. Now again, there's no, there's no attachment, but I believe that came from, uh, the board.
That came from me. Um, as I think you've all heard on the radio, Sandy Dennis is in Halifax for treatments, and, uh, she got the ball rolling, uh, that Yarmouth should have a cancer, full cancer treatment, radiation and chemo. So they made a motion in Yarmouth to support this idea, so I would like to make a motion that we support the idea of having a, um, cancer unit in Yarmouth Hospital.
Okay, been moved and seconded. Any questions, any comments?
Uh, would that, would that letter be sent to, uh, to the provincial, the Department of Health, I guess?
That was my question.
Yeah, Department of Health, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you, that's all I have.
And probably CC'd to all MLAs and whoever.
Yeah.
Any others? There are none. Call them for the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrimined, nay? Motion carried. Next one is your, uh, the draft, twenty seventeen eighteen operating budget and highlights. And I am going to pass that on to our CAO, or, to our CAO.
So last year at this time, we had an opportunity to look at the draft budget, um, and we, you know, pushed to have that happen again at the end of April. Um, I, I can, I can approach this a number of ways. I, I did add a qualitative document on the back, which would have been a late add for you. Um, but the budget has been there for, for, um, you know, for a while. So it has been altered slightly since it was initially put in, but not significantly. So uh, the purpose of putting it here is not to get into any sort of debate around what should or should not be there. The purpose is to give you an idea what we've done, and so you can, and, and explain the why behind that, and then maybe at our budget meeting, we can dig in to some of the details, right? Certainly, I'm happy to dig in the details today. I'm just saying that, um, you know, whatever you have in terms of questions or comments, we're, we're here to entertain that now. Um, but I, I mean, if you wanna get, dig in, like, real deep, um, we can, you know, certainly that's a budget meeting that, that typically you, you, you do as, as a council. But I will, um, highlight certain things that are new, and then maybe, and I know if you have any questions or concerns, certainly, this is, I didn't mean to suggest that you couldn't have that conversation, I'm just saying that, I'm just saying that our intention as staff was, was to present preliminary numbers and, and to hear your initial input on it. So, um, so I'm going to read my notes on the budget as opposed to having the numbers in front of me. Uh, what you might want to do is have the numbers in front of you, and so as I describe them, you'll see them. So, um, so I'm obviously starting on page one, well, that shouldn't be too obvious, but as we're accountants. But anyway, um, so the taxation revenues, just wanna say, overall, there is a two percent increase from the prior year. Most of that is driven from, from residential growth, so, meaning new, new construction and also market adjustments. So, uh, market adjustments meaning, uh, uh, increase, increase in market, uh, most of which would have been restricted by the cap on assessment. So there might be a lot of situations where, and you might see this in your, on your own tax bill, is that you got your assessment this year and your market value went down compared to last year. That is entirely possible, that some of your residents have seen this. However, they will still potentially see an increase in their tax bill, because they were not being taxed on the market value. They were being taxed on the cap value, which is lower than the market, okay? Five years ago, that gap was quite considerable for the municipality of Argal and a lot of rural municipalities. But what has happened is that the market has shrunk in rural Nova Scotia, so market values across rural Nova Scotia have been decreasing generally. Not all, but in certain areas have been decreasing. And so as the cap increases and the market decreases, the gap between those two numbers is now starting to close, uh, quite a bit. And in some cases, on some properties, uh, in fact, they're the same number. So every, every year where the market might go up and down, they might see that change instantly on their bill, depending on what it is. So that's information that we can certainly, we can certainly, uh, promote on our, on our social media around understanding your tax bill. It is kind of complicated, the cap on assessment um, is complex, and, uh, the AMA and the UNSM's position has officially been that it is an unfair cap and that it treats people unfairly. And people that go to sell homes and purchase other homes feel the pain, particularly in areas like CBRM and HRM, where market values, uh, might, might be, uh, the gap might be different. It hurts a lot of people, like seniors for instance, that are in their homes, and they feel like their home is too, is too large for them, and they look to downgrade. They get a, they get a shock. get a, they get a shock when they, they buy a home that's way smaller, but then the cap disappears, and they have an unknown, uh, property tax issue. So, anyway, I don't, I'm trying not to go too far down that road, but, but I'm just saying the cap is restricting some of our growth, but it's also has restricted some of our, in, in the years where the market has decreased, it has also decreased our downside, it has restricted the downside of market reductions. So, all that to say, you might not remember all of that, but a two percent increase this year, please remember that. So, so it, it represents about a hundred thousand dollars in, in municipal residential revenues, and there's a total increase expected of about a hundred and twenty-three. Well, of course, some of those increases also increase our expenses, which we'll hit a little later. Uh, the deed transfer taxes budget has been increased by seventeen thousand dollars to more accurately reflect, reflect our history, so that we don't have to tell you twelve times that we underget underestimated, uh, we'll only tell, tell you ten, ten times next year. So, revenues from own sources, um, that includes interest on investments, uh, and, and other revenues that we generate internally, um, we provide services to other organizations such as, um, such as the REN and, uh, and the Industrial Commission for IT Services, so that's included in there as well. The revenues are expected to remain fairly stable, uh, however, the comfit revenue is expected to increase, uh, by about ten thousand dollars, what we're expecting this year, and I think that number is still potentially low, but we don't have a, a lot of history, and when I, and when I don't have a lot of history, I guess on the low side. So, uh, um, we managed to, to be in the about thirty-five thousand range after eight months of operation. So, if you do the math, if you go, if you multiply by twelve and divide by eight, that number will be higher than forty-five. So, just, just letting you know.
Yeah.
Uh, small c conservative. So, uh, conditional transfers from provincial and federal governments, again, fairly stable from last year, but there's been a lot of changes in, in, in what is coming in and, and what isn't. So, last year, we had funding for active transportation strategy that we brought provincial money and federal money in to pay for, well, that was a one-time event, that's no longer there, so the expense isn't there and neither is the revenue. However, we are showing twenty-three thousand dollars coming in from the province to complete the investment readiness work, um, for aquaculture in Argyle. So, that was thanks to an application that we, that we, and our, and our contact with the province, with the Department of Agriculture, aquaculture, has resulted in funding that will help us set the stage for potential investors, and you had a presentation today by one of the suppliers, um, so, so just, just to give you a, a taste of, you know, of, of what that could look like, um, so, again, overall, there's not a huge change in the number, uh, last year was eighty-one and now it's seventy, so slightly lower, but, um, again, uh, we don't have associated expenses with that, with that decrease also has decreased the expense. Uh, one other thing, transfers from our own reserves, and what you'll see is, is a huge transfer, and you should know what that is, that's the transfer for the DOMTEX demolition, which will occur this year, and so, uh, we had estimated it would occur a little faster, which is why we budgeted for it, a part of it last year, so we are budgeting essentially the full project this year. The, and this is obviously a partnership between our two units, our two partner units in, in the town municipality of Yarmouth. Uh, we also included, um, a hundred thousand dollars coming from the East Pumnico Water Utility, we're anticipating about a hundred thousand dollar project, uh, to, uh, refresh the East Pumnico Water Utility, most of that will be on holding tank and, and some of the related equipment. Um, that money is, is not paid for by the taxpayer, it's paid, uh, by the municipal taxpayer, that money is being used from the divestiture, from the, uh, the, the fund that we received from the province when the province told us or asked us politely to take it over. So, the hundred thousand is gonna come from there, so that's not actually reflecting in any, uh, cost to the municipal taxpayer at this time, and nor will it, actually. So, if we go to page two, we see expenditures listed...
Before you go to expenditures, can we go back to revenue for just a second?
Absolutely.
You mentioned the comfit, like a lot, for the, to clarify for the public, we should mention that is our, uh, two windmills that you see that went up last summer, in the Rose Road.
The Rose Road.
Up in Wellington, we're a third owner, and the forty-five thousand projected income this year will be coming from those windmills. So, that's what he meant when he said the comfit project.
Thank you, thank you. So, and, and the residents of Argyle should also know that the money that was utilized to purchase those came from federal gas tax. So, that was from taxes that people pay on their fuel consumption, so what, what we all liked about the project is that we're using that money and we're actually creating renewable energy with those funds, and it's creating an income stream for the municipality.
Renewable money.
Thanks for...
Renewable money.
Right, so thanks for clarifying that, because I, I get a tendency to talk, speak in riddles.
You left the numbers in more publications.
Yeah. There you go. Exactly, so, so, uh, on page two, the expenditures, um, if we look at the general government services, if we look budget to budget, it's almost identical. Um, and so, where we have savings in some areas, we have expenses in others, but overall, it's, it's remained essentially the same. Uh, the thing with general government services, and Marcia had mentioned this in her presentation, is that there's a lot of line items there that, that actually have an element of contingency or, we're not sure if it's gonna happen, but it's, but we're gonna have to put it in our budget in case it happens, things like repairs to our buildings and, and, uh, legal services and other consultant fees, you may, you may not use them, but we have to budget for them in case. And so, what happens often is that the actual expenditure is lower than budgeted, all, every year that I've been here, that's what's happened. So, however, the, uh, this year, one thing that will absolutely not happen is the election. So, we had the election last year, we had budgeted thirty-five thousand dollars, we actually came in better than that, but, but this year, that expense should be zero. So, that goes away, but then other expenditures have increased, uh, one of which is an increased, uh, grant to the Mariners Center, which, uh, is actually being budgeted for more accurately, in my opinion, at the front of the year, as opposed to asking for forgiveness later, they're asking for permission now for a funding amount which you will have to approve as council, of course. And other things such as, like salary, salary, uh, and, um, other technology services, audit services, et cetera, uh, conference costs, grants to orgs, so all of those slight increases or, or, or more than ten thousand dollar increases are essentially offset by the election cost, or cost savings, I should say. So, protective services is always higher every year, uh, most of that is driven by, uh, the RCMP services, we're anticipating a three percent increase, we have not received that confirmation yet from, from the province, however, they gave us a bit of a warning, so we have a pretty good idea it's gonna be that number, which increases thirty by, our budget by thirty-two thousand dollars. Um, there are some changes in the way that we budgeted in protective services, uh, one of which is under the Property Inspection and Public Works, the, uh, Louis Boudreaux's position, which is facilities maintenance, remains in that department, however, Wayne Hubbard, our field maintenance position, has been shifted to the Recreation Department as it made more sense for him to report directly to Recreation, as ninety percent of his work relates to fields, so it made more sense to align it differently. Uh, Louis and Wayne work together, but they actually report to different people. Uh, so, also, uh, and so for the, for the rest of the expenditures, I will say that, that fire protection, for instance, has not been approved by, uh, the Volunteer Fire Group. So, so anything you see here in terms of sewer, wastewater for Tuscat, West Pumnico, and the fire, has to be consulted first before it comes back for final approval. Transportation Services is showing a twelve thousand dollar savings compared to last year's budget, last year's budget was three thirty-three, three twenty-eight, this year's three twenty-one, uh, there's a, uh, there's a thirty-four thousand dollar savings under the active transportation line because we'll, that, like I had mentioned, we, that's a one-time expend, expenditure, but there is an increase, a significant increase in the airport operational support, uh, that line has three elements in it, and one of which is, is on the agenda, uh, for consideration, for approval, um, it's actually not a grant to the airport, but it would be a grant to the REN, but it does relate to airport economic development, uh, the liaison and oversight committee of the airport will be able to brief you as we get to that line item, but just so that you know, that contemplated potential expenditure is included here, I'm not trying to presume you're gonna say yes, I'm just, I, I wanna show that, that, that we've, we've incorporated it here, if you choose not to go down that road for whatever reason, then obviously this, this budget will change. So, when, when we hit that decision, you'll know that it's in here. Um, environmental health, uh, is, is showing, uh, that's the sewer and East Pumnico Water Utilities, it's showing the savings, but all of that gets paid for by the users anyway, so that's, that's a wash essentially for you. Um, garbage collection and disposal, we're holding pretty solid, uh, six hundred and ninety thousand compared to six hundred and eighty, uh, we did increase the unsightly and dangerous premises budget, last year we had it at seven thousand, it came in at twelve thousand eight, that was due to write-offs, um, from, from previous cleanups that we could not collect through tax sale, and so, we are increasing that budget to eighteen, we don't have a particular plan of action yet in place for the eighteen, um, and I imagine that that will, the motion tonight potentially influences what we can do and whether that number needs to change. So, again, preliminary, but we're expecting that number to go up. Medical clinics, expected to hold essentially the same, um, we always anticipate a certain amount that, to go to doctor recruitment incentives, last year we didn't have any, and it's possible we don't have one now, um, but, but we know that there's, that there are internists and pediatricians, et cetera, that might, that might be interested in coming to the region, and there might be a request that comes to you for consideration. Um, environmental development is, again, very, very close to the budget of last year, four forty-eight compared to four fifty-five this year. Uh, I have included a couple of new things in there that you should be aware of, uh, one is that we put a line item for aquaculture specifically for twenty thousand dollars, if you remember, we're getting twenty-three in income, there's a reason why we're getting more, we asked for an administration fee because we are administering the, the project on behalf of, uh, any, anyone, the province proponent, so we actually are gonna make money on that initiative. Um, it's, it's basically considering our time and energy in the project, so, and so the other amount is, uh, a ten thousand dollar amount for housing initiatives, you've, you have indicated that housing was a priority, and so, this would be for any sort of operating costs relating to housing, like if we needed to develop a study, if we need to obtain information or get, it, it, it's not intended to be capital in nature, it's not intended to be an incentive for somebody to come in and do housing, it's intended for us to have room in case we need to get additional information, so it's an, from an operational perspective, not a capital perspective, okay? So, ten thousand should be plenty for the operating component of that priority. Uh, Recreation and Cultural is showing an increase overall, um, of thirty-two thousand six sixty-six, um, so it was five twenty-nine, five hundred and twenty-nine thousand nine hundred last year, now that includes the library and courthouse and, and Recreation and Active Living, this year is slightly higher, and one of the biggest reasons, almost the only reason, is, is transferring the, the position from Public Works to, to Recreation, so it's now showing there. So, we're Public Works, Public Works budget actually increased, uh, uh, for three or four initiatives, and that increase, uh, it's hard to tell, it looks like Pub, Public Works Department hasn't changed very much, but it actually has, and so, and some of the expenditures are now in Recreation, so we can dig in deeper in terms of what that means, uh, in the future, but that's, that's why it's showing higher in Recreation.
So, and Recreation and Active, Active Living are together now, so...
That's correct.
Active Living is no longer?
It, it is, it is, it continues to be, but what we've done is, uh, we've, we've, we've essentially combined the two departments, they're still, they're, they're still gonna work the same, it's just, it, it was not really that practical, we were separating program expenses and really we didn't have to because they were essentially doing things together, and, so, we just tried to make it simpler, yeah, so, and, uh, you know, we still get the twenty-five thousand dollar grant, we still...
Yeah.
Yeah, and so, and as you, as you are aware, Jeanette is taking on a more active role in the Active Living piece, uh, and, and Natalie's taking a little bit more on the, uh, the director, uh, responsibility, so...
Okay.
Even the way that they're gonna work, they're gonna work slightly different, and so the budget reflects a slight change in the way they're gonna operate. So, um, not, not a big change, but certainly one that, uh, that, that I think is positive. So, education is, uh, on the last, page three, education is only up slightly, uh, that is, that expense is based on uniform assessment, last year, if you remember, our uniform assessment almost never changed, um, and so, in the year after that, it affects these expenditures. So, because we had very little change last year in the uniform assessment, this number doesn't change very much, next year, it will go up by about two percent because that's how much our taxation assessment went up, so it's always a year late, just so that you know. So, it, it is remaining pretty good, I think next year it'll be harder, it'll be a, a bit more difficult to, uh, to make the budget work because, because of that, the potential increase will be much larger than that. And so, finally, um, transfers to your own reserves, the transfer to the Industrial Commission's included in that number, as well as a transfer, uh, an, an expense line item for the East Pumnico Utility work, your debt to, uh, your debt repayment for the West Pumnico Sewer, which is paid for a hundred percent by West Pumnico residents or users of the system, is included there, and I have increased the transfer to the Capital Reserve from one twenty to one thirty-five, um, in this budget. And so, that's the highlights, I don't know how highlighty it was, 'cause I went into some detail. Um, clearly, this is, this is a good draft, so, meaning it, it is subject to your interpret, to your changes, to your suggestions, uh, where we have discretionary income, clearly, and discretionary expenditures, clearly, we, we don't have a lot of movement on things like education, as you know, but on discretionary, uh, line items, um, certainly, we wanna have that discussion and make sure council, um, has a chance to ask all the questions they wish. I'm happy to entertain any sort of preliminary questions or comments at this time.
Counselor Sret?
Uh, do you feel this is a tight budget?
Um, I think, I think it was, uh, I, I feel like this budget was a bit better than last year because, because of the increase in the revenue, uh, percentage combined with my point around the education, so, we got a little bit more on the top and a little bit more, um, uh, a little bit less pain on education, okay? So, it's, I, I think, you know, certainly, um, and if you, if you notice, there's, there's really, it, it does balance, and it balances with very little amount coming from another area, like, so there's no big anticipated transfer from a surplus, you know, what, what will happen here is, is, uh, it, it, I mean, we can certainly, yeah, I mean, I think it's, it was probably a bit more manageable this year compared to last.
And the first one, last question to it is, uh, do you see any download, obviously you've, you've prepared in this budget, do you see any downloading from the province, uh, maybe next year, 'cause certainly you, you don't see it here, but it seems like a letter you had sent us from, uh, the, from, Mr. Churchill, from the municipal government, Minister, that there was some stuff, uh, in the, in order, a one-year notice, so do you feel there'll be even, even with education, there might be some other stuff, or at this moment, you don't really know? It's a hard to tell.
Well, see, the, the difficulty with, with what they've done is they've given us a one-year notice.
Yes.
The intention of the one-year notice was to say, in one year, you're gonna have an increase in environmental costs of five thousand dollars, be warned, okay? That was the intention. What's happening now is, is the, the letters are saying, well, you might see an increase in this, we're not sure what it is yet. So, it's not really a one-year notice, it's like a, it's like a one-year, oh, by the way, this might happen, so, I mean, we, 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 in our experience... So, I mean, we, and our experience has been is they've given us one-year notice on the municipal auditor, municipal auditor general, that never happened, right? And so, and they've given us notice on the cost of DNA, which will go down this year, but maybe up again next year. That's very insignificant cost to us. So I wouldn't say it's anything considerable. Things like expense, the new transparency committee might come out with things that might cost us money. I.e., you know, additional resources around expense transparency, that might cost us money. And they have been for a while now messing around with the fiscal review work and the town task force work, which had made a number of recommendations. And one of the biggest ones that would have an impact on us is the cost of roads and road maintenance, which appeared to be a popular topic a little earlier. So, so, but this, this is, what they're saying is, the position of the towns and of the provinces is that there's an inequity between what the towns pay for roads and what rurals pay for roads. That's actually a true statement. So how that works itself out and how other things might change. This year, there's nothing, it's, whatever, whatever's coming is there.
Is there.
But, but next year, in the year's future, yes, you might see some things that are downloaded. One of the things that is being indirectly downloaded on us is through Waste Check. Waste Check is receiving less money for diversion, and that is impacting what Waste Check is looking for from the municipalities. So in this budget, we're showing an increase of about four thousand dollars or five that's going to Waste Check for their operations. And it's, and that's directly because the province has said, we're reducing our divestiture funding. So money has to come from somewhere. So they either do less, or they have to ask us for more. That's a download. So there are indirect ways that that still happens.
Good, thank you, very good.
Any more questions?
Just that, I guess we will have to set up a budget meeting in the near, near future. And what I'm seeing, it shouldn't be a very long meeting.
We typically do the run-through, and then we also do the grants to organizations spreadsheet, the work that we do around, so we can set that plan up now if you wish. I think last year, we did the grants to organizations after our regular council meeting. And then maybe two days later, we had a second meeting and we were done.
I'd like to see everything done before the fifteenth.
We'll make it happen. So what you haven't seen is the capital, which we endeavor to give you this week. In your, so take a look at your emails. It should be by the end of the week or early next at the very latest. So you'll have plenty of time to look at it. That one, you really need to look at a lot more because, A, you don't, you don't see the capital budget very often. You deal with operations all the time, capital not so much. And those are bigger numbers. So, you know, we're gonna be including things like rural internet and other such projects. And so we'll have, that may have, we may have to deal with that one even separately from the operating conversation. But all before the fifteenth.
No, not necessarily, but I mean, makes it easier for me to get here.
It's all possible.
Okay, so if there's no more questions, we don't need any, anything on this?
No, I apologize, I've spoken probably too long on it. One of the things that I think you should be aware of is included in this budget is a contemplated decrease in the interest we charge on overdue taxes. So you'll see that in the highlights. So the average rate across Nova Scotia is pretty much what we charge, which is sixteen percent. So in this, in this interest environment, that's quite high, particularly. And so, so one of the things you might consider, and it's already contemplated for in the budget, is a potential reduction in that interest rate. And that should be done really, we do that by motion, we could do that by policy, but we do it by motion. What does that do? Well, it allows people that are having a bit of trouble, a little bit, it's helping those people to pay their bills. So you can, you can do different things around that, you can, but we're just contemplating a decrease. And the only reason why we're suggesting it is, is, again, the current interest, the current interest rates on debt are quite low. The sixteen percent has been there forever when, when the debt was higher, that the prime rates were higher.
The history to that was because we wanted people to pay their taxes before they paid the credit cards. So that's why we had a high credit. So they would be interested, get their taxes paid. If you bring it too low, then they're gonna concentrate on other bills that have high interest.
And that's, that's the balance, right? That's the balance. So for the budget meeting, we can, we can provide you information of what other units are doing. That might give you some, some information on whether or not that's a good idea.
Okay, I guess we'll move on to the, I see, which is the airport. Yes, Liaison and Oversight Committee discussion. As you remember, at our last meeting, I brought that in my, in my report, that there was a decision at the committee to allot a hundred thousand dollars. And that was for, and that was for hiring of an extra person, economic development type person to look for possibilities of what could be done at the airport. So I guess we're looking now basically for a decision. It's, our, our total, our contribution would be roughly thirty-two thousand. And the other two units, which is Yarmouth and the town, Muespalti and the town of Yarmouth, have both brought it up to their councils and have approved their part of it. So I guess now what we're looking for is a motion to, well, I guess we're looking, we'll discuss it first so that you can, so that you know, or that if you have any questions. But that's what we're looking at, to have the hundred thousand dollar fund. And it's not to say that's a maximum of a hundred, okay? If that costs less, then it costs less. And if it doesn't happen, we don't pay. We're not just gonna put thirty-two thousand dollars, not gonna spend that unless something happens, so. So is there any questions, any discussion on that? You've all seen the, okay, Counselor Sret?
I guess maybe I was at the Liaison and Oversight Committee meeting. So who's driving, who's driving this request? Actually, I mean, I know we got it at the Liaison and Oversight Committee, that we should be looking, there's certain maybe projects that they keep going to. So is it, is it, it's not our manager, is it that board that, between us? I don't wanna name a name, but there's
Right.
Yeah. So are they driving this, that they feel there's something? Cuz I don't know what it is they're looking for.
Right.
There's something in the fire there that they think they can do? And I just feel, then I'll finish, that we've put so much money in there, is this just another wild goose chase? This is what I'm scared of, I mean, I'm gonna vote on the, in favor of the thirty-two thousand. I mean, let's, but who's driving this request? That's what I didn't get at that meeting.
That's a great question, actually, because, because it's being driven by a number of different groups. So what's happening, so it all started with the, it's certainly that conversation started at the airport board level, where the manager indicated that he can't work for the business and on the business at the same time, okay? And so we know when we hired our airport manager, that he was supposed to be an operations manager. So we didn't, we didn't, we didn't look for, nor did we expect him to be an economic development officer. And so what's happened as a consequence is a lot of opportunities that seem to be, some of them not legit, and some of them very legit, that come up. And so how do we know if, how does he handle that? He can't handle it on his own. And who else can handle it? Well, none of our economic development officers, nor the REN, have the resources to do that, which is why they're looking for additional resources. So the airport's position, stance on it is that that person should be hired by the airport for the airport. The owners had a different view. And so, and, and, and the REN also had met with the board of the airport board. And so we had members of the Liaison and Oversight Committee of the REN, and we had the REN board, and we had the airport board meet and talk together about the economic development opportunities that could happen. And what became obvious very fast to the REN board was, you don't have a closer. You have a board chair who knows practically everyone on La Planet Terre, on the planet Earth, right? She is extraordinarily well-connected. But if there, but if there's some work to be done in order to like, create an agreement or, or do whatever it takes in order to execute a business deal, we can't expect a volunteer to be able to do that. And so that was really the disconnect, or the need that the REN had identified as well very quickly in that conversation. How we execute that work is, I think there are different views. So I think the owners, or some of the owners, were very adamant that if it's economic development, it should go in the REN. The REN has a strategic plan for the region, and one of the biggest assets of their economic development plan ought to be the airport. It's a great way to engage the economic development organization with what's going on. So it was a good way to connect the two. I think the airport board really wanted that person to be working at the airport for the airport. The reality of the situation is, and I know this is long-winded, is that, is that this particular position is actually unlikely to be an employee. It's more likely that it's gonna be somebody well-connected in aviation or aerospace from the city or from another area that can make connections. They may not even work out of our area, right? If we're, if we're looking to drum up business, we have to be where business is drummed up. So while there is no concrete plan on who that might be, whether it's a firm or whether it's a, or somebody that's retired from business, the need was identified, we know it could be potentially expensive. That's why there was a cap set at a hundred thousand. And I think what the Liaison and Oversight Group said was, you know what? We can't afford to not try.
Try, at least try.
For some of these opportunities, there are some in the pipe. They're confidential, they can't be disclosed at this time because, for obvious reasons. But, but there are things that could, that could produce something quite positive for the region. And we just didn't wanna lose that opportunity because we were under-resourced.
Thank you, that's a great, great answer.
So these opportunities have been referred to low lying fruit, right?
Yes, it is, it is not hundreds of thousands of dollars of consulting fees to figure out whether or not these things are viable or not. That's not what we're talking about.
No.
What we're talking about is partnership with NSBI and other partners on two or three very specific initiatives that have already been raised by Nova Scotia, Nova Scotia Business Inc. and the board. They've had conversations about these opportunities. So they may not come to fruition, it's just like, it's like anything else. But it, but we're not talking about investing a bunch of money on consultants to do a study. This is about actually sitting with business and trying to iron out something. So, so, yeah. So we think the REN board is well-equipped to, to, to find, to help us find that person. And they have agreed in principle to provide supervisory, to provide a supervisory role for this position.
Is that something that we were discussing, whether or not we're three units, which unit is this person gonna work for? Or who's gonna be supervising this unit? And like you said, it would be better if the rent took over. Counselor Bong?
Actually, my question was answered. I wasn't gonna ask if there was any more information on the logistics or who or what this entity might look like, if it was gonna be in-house for REN or if you were gonna hire it out, but it's not been decided.
No, but it's more likely going to be a combination of utilizing the existing staff of the REN and hiring somebody third-party. So I imagine there'd be some coordination done by the staff of the REN currently, which we already pay for. And then there would be an add-on for a specific expertise depending on what we're looking at.
This budget of a hundred thousand, is it solely for wages? Or is that a budget for operational costs for this person?
The whole thing, it's all in.
All in?
All in.
That's our maximum.
Maximum.
Maximal hundred thousand?
Yes.
So it's highly likely then the wages wouldn't be a hundred thousand, they'd be much lower. I'm just concerned that the right person might cost more than that.
The right person would probably cost more than that. This is anticipating that we wouldn't, we wouldn't be utilizing this service for twelve months.
Could be six months.
It could be, so it would be somebody that would command a higher price because they have a very specific expertise.
Could be six months till when? What dignifies saying, okay, there?
We, well, there is no set date, there is no set plan. The only thing is, let's see what we can get as a budget. And then let's work the plan around what our fiscal capacity is. So I can't say here today that the REN or the LNO Committee of the airport wouldn't come back if something was working very well. They might come back and say, we need a little bit more, can you handle it? Now, that might come out of the airport budget, or it may come here. So I can't, I can't say it's, it appears today to be all-in, but we don't have all the information just yet to confirm with a lot of accuracy at this time.
And I fully understand, you know, the need for privacy around what they are working on because it's still in negotiation stages. But you do feel like there are matters at the airport that justify needing this? That there is a hope, I guess, is what I should say?
Well said.
Yeah, I mean, I've, I've been privy to some of those private conversations. And one in particular involves a very legitimate organization, a very legitimate organization in Nova Scotia, that is working currently with NSBI on a number of things. And the airport has been identified as a potential asset for, for growth for their project.
Interesting.
So
We just wanna be certain, cuz I feel everyone at this table probably feels the same as me. We want it to grow, we want it to work, but boy, it's getting expensive.
Yeah, I, I, I think that sentiment is being heard.
It's just
Not just around this table. It's also the other owners are starting to get a little bit concerned as well.
Counselor Oliver?
I just had a question that was kind of answered. I was wondering timeline, like time-wise, right? Because we do have an agreement, we went into an agreement, I don't know if it was a year, two ago, that we had said that, that we would go back in, in, in for four years, am I correct?
Yep.
And at least one year's gone by, right? Possibly two? I'm just, it feels like we spun our wheels for so long now that I'm like, when are we going to get something concrete?
Yeah, I, I think that, I mean, I don't know, I can't crystal ball the answer to that question, but I think that, I think what we underestimated was the amount of work that was required by the organization to catch up the airport on some regulatory issues. So, so there was a lot of what's going on, why isn't there anything going on? Where, where, where in the, it was like looking at, it was like looking at the house and saying, there's nothing going on at the house, but all the while, the foundation's being like rebuilt from within. So I think there was a lot of that internal work that doesn't, that doesn't show, right? You don't see it, but was required in order for the certification to continue. So I think there was a lot of time and energy spent there, which I think there was, that wasn't known by the owners of the airport at the time, how much work and energy was going to be put in that. So I think that's part of the reason why it's like, phew, right? I think, yeah, so
And I'm also, I'm in favor of this as well, because I feel like this is our best chance of getting a concrete answer. You know, getting some real, you know, real information on this would be a go or this, you know, what we could possibly do there, so.
Yeah.
I definitely, but I was just curious as to, I know, it is hard to, but I just want to, is it here? Is it, you know, is it gonna?
I think those opportunities are certainly gonna be worked on in this fiscal, like in the next three, six, eight, twelve months. How they get worked on is hard to know, and which ones get worked on is difficult to know until we get the right people. Cuz we're, it's beyond our expertise.
With only a hundred thousand dollar budget, and I share the same, same concerns losing it. Who's gonna take on a job like that with virtually no job security? It's, and not knowing how long they're gonna be there and, and, and I'm thinking a person of that caliber, a hundred thousand dollars. Is not gonna go very many months. And then we're gonna be back here in six months or even less. And they're gonna say, talking about the pipe you was talking about, pulling these things out of the pipe. Where they're gonna come back and say, well, they've moved them down the pipe a little bit further. And it's just gonna be a continuous cycle of a hundred thousand, a hundred thousand, a hundred thousand and. Like Nicole said, when do we stop spinning the wheels? So that's my concern. This hundred thousand may sound like not a lot, but it's just the beginning.
So our, uh, the only response I'd have to that is, is, is you're right, a hundred thousand probably doesn't pay for a person's salary for twelve months. Based on the type of person that we're looking at. So it is more than likely going to be utilized to engage a, a contractor that does this and other things. So it would be, and, and so we would have a specific contract that would say, you know, you've got this much time. This is, you know, let's, let's execute these things, be very clear about what we're looking to execute. And if you, if they, if he or she or the organization doesn't execute, we've, we've given it a shot. Like, this is, there is risk associated with this. It will not necessarily bear fruit. And that's, I just, like, let's be real. That's, that's possible, but, but, but we won't get any, we won't. The, the probability of, of something occurring there is far less if we do nothing. Because we don't have the resources to, to do that, but we have to be mindful. You know, the warden is correct. We have to be very mindful of how far we go here. And I think it's important to make sure that our partners know that too.
It feels like our best chance though, at getting some.
Yeah.
Real answers.
Last kick in the can.
So, any other comments? Any other discussion? So.
I'd like to make, I'd like to make a motion.
Wait, yeah, we need a motion.
I'd like to make a motion that uh, we uh, uh. We give uh, we fund thirty-two thousand as been asked by our partners. Uh, to uh fund the airport on this and then, on this endeavor. Oh, the REN, sorry. The REN. Roy the project, the REN.
Is there a second there?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. If I hear no discussion, a couple of questions. All in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrimined, nay. Motion carried. Next one is municipal accountability and transparency committee recommendations. There's fifteen pages to that. And again, I think I'm going to, to, to turn that to our CAO. Maybe he can explain a little more what's. Basically know what it has to do with, but.
So this is the post-Richmond reaction. How's, how's that? Sorry. That's frank, but. Anyway, so um, there's a summary of recommendations here. There's really not necessarily a decision to be made by this council today. Uh, it might be something you table for the future. You might wait for the AMA, UNSM or Department of Municipal Affairs to come out something, but. Essentially what they're saying is they're now gonna be requiring municipalities to post expenses online. So we're, you know. You know, we're, we're beginning to, to do that, so now it's gonna be mandatory through the MGA, so. Fine. Um, and that's, that's restricted to CAO and council, so there's.
No, there's no problem with that.
No, so I mean, we were okay with that, so. And so, you know, each expense has to be accompanied by a business purpose, et cetera. So they'll probably, what I anticipate is that there'll be templates and best practices created. And that we will be receiving those and we'll be using them. Okay? So strengthen expense policies and practices. Um, you know, we already have an expense policy. There, they'll create a best practice. We might steal things from them and ours might be better. It's hard to tell. So, you know, that's not gonna be a big deal. I think that there's always room for improvement and I imagine a, a good group of people get together and do that. Uh, require code of conduct, conduct and a complaint process. Um, they talk a lot about whistleblowing. They don't like to call it whistleblowing because it makes people sound like, you know. That they're ratting out their friends and, but they're, they're, it's, but, but on the flip side, there, there's a real problem with. When the CAO is doing bad business, because who is gonna report that? You know, and anybody who, who might even have an inkling of that works for that person. So it's very difficult and challenging. So there should be some way to do this in a way that, that protects. Uh, the employees or whoever might be involved. So I imagine, again, the Department of Municipal Affairs will probably look to do something there. Uh, which is the next point, clarify the role of DMA. And the last piece is, uh, you should uh, do performance management for the CAO. Council should conduct performance management. Um, and, and they are looking to add that as a governance indicator. Like, so are you doing it? Yes or no? Tick, tick box, good for you, or X, you didn't do it. So that, you know, council will now be forced, I guess, for all intensive purposes if you wanna look like, like good governance. Uh, to, to, to give the CEO a performance evaluation, probably at least annually. And the last one is, uh, is that they're probably going to mandate an additional uh non-council member on your audit committee. So that usually would be somebody uh with some business acumen or some accounting background. Uh, it can't be your auditors because that, they, they have to be independent of that group. So that's the, the highlights. I mean, you can choose to endorse them. You can choose to do nothing. At this point, that's the recommendations that have been distributed. So.
So do we, yeah, go ahead.
Uh, on a, uh, I, I read on the news with Lloyd Hines, some of the stuff he was paying with his credit card. So I guess my question here is, uh, when we go to a UNSM and you pay for a room. You know, I've paid with my credit card. I've also had, the municipality had paid for it before. So according to that, I, not this Lloyd Hines, he was paying with stuff with his credit card, but he had the receipts and everything.
Yeah.
So really, should it be the municipality that pays with a corporate card? Is that what I'm reading there?
Uh, I think there are different ways of doing that. I mean, if, if you are spending your own money for business purposes. And submit that for reimbursement, that's pretty clear-cut. Um, what happens, some of the problems are when, you know, every, everybody has a credit card. So the more credit cards you have out there, the less control you have over the co- over the transactions. There's actually nothing, like, the difference between a credit card and, and through the regular pay, like accounts payable. It's that accounts payable requires a pre-authority. The credit card does not. If you have a credit card, you're authorized. So counselor Gisudet can, can, can post any transaction to that credit card. And, and if it's personal, then, or business, it, it, it doesn't matter. It will authorize. So, so then it's incumbent upon the accounting department or the honesty of you to say. Look, I accidentally did something pers- on personal on this uh credit card. The reality is there's only one credit card that's issued to counselors and it's to the warden. And he uses it so rarely that there's dust that is collecting on it.
I'm so uncomfortable having that.
Very good.
So it really, and the only purpose really from our perspective would be to, to, to book hotels or to book. Like, because you have to book with a credit card. We can do that through the, through the municipality. Uh, but sometimes it's from a convenience perspective, you would do that. And so some, some policies actually say you cannot use your credit card unless it's for A, B, C. So then if, if you use the credit card for something other than those things, then you've breached your policy. So every policy is different. Every practice is different. Uh, from an internal control perspective, the less credit cards are out there, the better. That's, that's how we roll. Yeah.
But.
Thank you.
But is it better for us to book our own room, pay for it and then submit? Is it, is it an easier way of keeping track and for, to make sure that it's?
No. It's, it's the same. It's the same.
Same thing.
We, it's either we control it or we control the reimbursement to you.
Right.
And from, from my perspective, it's, it's not necessarily fair to force somebody to advance their own personal money on a business trip. So if, so we often do the bookings on our credit card and we manage it internally. There is no, from our perspective, there's, there's not a big difference between those two. The only thing is, is, is if we see that it's done by MasterCard and we see the receipt, that there, that we wanna make sure that it's our MasterCard. As opposed to your MasterCard. If you're, if, so we use MasterCard. Visas are, are often used. And so if, you know, there are very few MasterCards out there, so we don't typically mix, mix that.
So we don't need anything on this at this point? Just, just wait for.
Wait till see you down the bike.
Yep. Next item, cannabis legalization and municipal impact symposium. There's going to be, as we know, that, that uh, legislation's gonna come through, legalization cannabis. It's, it's on its way and I guess there is an impact. It could, there could be an impact to, to, we'll have to deal with it as a municipality for sure. Now, there's a symposium being held on Friday, May twenty-sixth in Halifax. And I guess probably wouldn't hurt to have some representation there. Some, you know, to get, to get some uh, information.
Just a comment.
Yes.
Going through this, to me, it looks more like it should be a senior staff, somebody from senior staff. And that's because they'll be the ones that will be dealing with it. And then they can brief us to what we have to know, but we're talking well over a year before it's even legalized.
For sure.
In months before they sort it out.
Well, that is something, like I said, it's a, just wanna, you know, we wanted to bring it that, that it's going to happen. And to me, somebody should attend from, from the municipality, whether it's staff or council or whatever. Somebody should.
If I may, what makes you say you, you feel like staff should go? I, I just, I can't for the life of me think how this legislation would affect us on a municipal level. Planning? Makes total sense.
Plan use.
I just. Okay.
I know for the, when I was do, when I went to the police advisory meeting, the policing, uh, it's gonna be an issue for them. I mean, it's one thing when you're talking about um, driving under the influence of alcohol. There are ways of, of checking for that, but the officer that was speaking to us said, this is a whole new kettle of fish, right? And you're looking at managing that part of it too. So I don't know if that will increase, I don't know. You know what I mean?
There could be an indirect uh additional officer requirements, which would be a cost to the municipality. Um, the things, there are always nuisances with grow-ups. There, there's a smell when the bloom comes in. And we've had certain people with small medical marijuana, like licenses to grow for their own purposes. That have had complaints uh from their neighbors around the smell every once in a while. I don't know how often it blooms, but, but it's those kinds of things. Those are, you know, smell and other nuisances that we may have to address in our bylaws. So I, I mean, I agree with, with the warden. I think that we can, we certainly can send a staff person. I, my own personal suggestion would be a community development officer, if she's able, and she could present the information to council.
Yeah.
Yeah, that answers my question.
Absolutely.
I couldn't think what, how it could affect, but it.
Yeah.
If it ends up being a, a growing facility, probably follows under a farmer or whatnot, or different types of zoning and planning.
So. I guess we need a motion to that effect.
I, I would, I would suggest that, so for clarity, yep.
Yeah.
So move.
Okay.
Second.
Moved and seconded. And that for moving seconded to send a, a staff.
A staff person. You don't have to identify the person at this time, yeah.
So unless there's uh questions or comments or. Call for the question. All those in favor will signify by saying aye. Contrimined, nay. Carried. Next one is policy, policy bylaw update. Again, that is there basically, it's, it's for information and just to show what, what we have, what has been done to them. Repealed or, or new ones that have come up. So it's basically there for your information, I guess.
Chris has the presentation.
Chris has, okay.
You said it quite well. It's there for your information. Um, it's just to remind you the policies and bylaws that we do have, um, and the ones that maybe you see are missing and that we should have. Um, it's not something we look at very often, um, but it is obviously important documents for the municipality. Because they, it's what governs programs and services, in some services. If you do ever have any questions or comments around any policies or bylaws, don't be afraid to ask.
Okay.
But that is, is pretty well a summary of all of the policies and bylaws that we do have, their approved date. Um, whether or not they're in draft or if they're outdated and what we're intending to do um with each of them.
Is that it? Any, any questions or? Okay, thank you, Chris. We'll move on. Request for relief of taxes and interest. Only one request. And it was in the office June to have this corrected. So I guess we, we need a, we need a motion to, to accept.
I would, I would recommend that.
I'll make the motion.
Second is second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye. Contrimined, nay. Motion carried. And the added one, that's for me. Uh, if you remember, what was it, two years ago, three years ago, they had their first uh, um. It's a, it's a, I guess it's a, it's a gathering of, of uh. The Francophones from all, all across. I mean, they, they come from everywhere. They come from, from, it's in Quebec. Uh, our warden at that time went. I'm on the committee now. And the, the Sedané is looking to send again. A member from each uh, four municipalities, the French, French municipalities. The Acadian Affairs, they, they apply to Acadian Affairs for, for funding for that. I was just told today that that has been approved for one thousand dollars per municipality. And that's to cover, that's to cover your flight, your hotel and whatever. Now, if I remember correctly, and, and you can, you can uh, clarify that, that last time. Did it cost a municipality anything? Did it cost more than a thousand? I don't think it did.
No.
It was, because, because what, what's gonna happen is, is the money's been given to the Sedané. We will, if I go, I will be giving the, my, my expenses here. But the municipality will bill. And recoup from the, from there. So I guess what we need now, this is happening in July, two days of conference in July. And uh, the committee has appointed me to go if the municipality will approve. My attendance at that. So I guess what I'm looking for is for a motion to approve my attendance in Quebec on July seventeen to nineteen. Second. Moved and seconded. Any, any questions? And, yes?
I was, uh, when they sent it out on the uh.
For the letter?
I, I had said, no, that was not in favor, because I thought we might be spending money there, but no, now that it's covered up.
Yeah.
It's a go for mine, mine.
No, what, what the, the letter was, what the letter was just to say that the uh, municipality would approve if it was paid. Right, so. Question? Question called for. All in favor signify by saying aye. Contrimined, nay. Motion carried. Thank you. The rest is correspondence right now, correspondence. And for information. We have one from. Oh, the building permit comparison. The Western REN Rural Broadband Project Application. Fisheries, fish, no, yeah, Fishery Magazine article. You've all seen it, yeah. Did you see the article that? That I left?
Yeah, I, I seen the write-up that I left. So which article was it going into?
It's going in the um, uh, the Fisheries Magazine that Walter Nekamp produces.
Okay, yeah.
I can't recall the name right offhand.
King Foster.
Yeah, something like that.
So that was your write-up, your personal write-up as the CEO of the municipality?
Yeah, he requested uh, uh, comments from, from myself and I passed it through the warden and deputy before.
Yeah, no, I, I just, I, I seen the write-up, but I couldn't figure out which Fishery Magazine it was, so.
Yeah.
Very nice write-up. It portrays as well.
Yes.
Who we are and what we are down here, what makes us operate.
What makes us miss meetings and everything else.
That's absolutely interesting.
Yarmouth International Airport, the annual report, and then we had a letter, I guess, with the application from REN, it looks like there was support from our MP Colin Fraser, there was a letter sent for support. Is there anything, any one of those that you want questions on or discuss, or? If not, financial requests, we don't have any. Anybody have any agenda topics or notice of motion? Yes?
A resident had approached me, and I completely forgot to add it to the agenda for this time, so I just wanted to mention it now, they had asked me if we had sent a formal letter of a thank you letter to the Mariners Center for all of the help that they had given us during the flood, because a lot of our residents went there and had, you know, got a lot of love from them, and I had asked, and apparently we had not, so, I mean, I can make the motion now, is that okay if I make the motion now?
I can, see why not.
Okay, that way it won't really want to talk about it.
Yeah.
So I'd like to make a motion that we send a thank you letter to the Mariners Center from our council, from the residents of our municipality for helping out during the flood.
A second.
The drought. Thank you.
Second.
Sitting here thinking, what? What have we missed?
You guys have been fishing long, don't you?
Yeah.
Don't pour water in my well.
Second. Okay, been moved and seconded.
Question?
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contraminded, nay. Yeah.
Point it on your brain.
I do. We're drained coming the next few days.
So nobody else has anything for notice of motion or agenda? Question period, we don't have to. Oh, we have some, right? Keep forgetting, we can get them from online now.
We have a Facebook Live question.
Yes.
Question is, when cell service to Carlton Kempville is, when is it going to be available? We need cell service in our area. So I imagine that could easily have come from Quinnen as well. That's still an issue, I don't have, we don't have an answer for that question at this time, because obviously we don't provide the service. I can say that we are investing a lot of time and energy in rural internet, and part of the plan would be a significant improvement to the infrastructure in our area. Now, I can't say that the cell technology could somehow be improved in that process or not at this time, but the fact of the matter is we have a major funding request for rural internet, and I wonder whether that could potentially open the opportunity for the Bells or the others of the world to decide that maybe cellphone can be tagged onto it, so I wish I had a good answer.
And we have sent also, last, was it last year, the year before, that we sent a letter to CRTC, is that?
Yes, we did.
Because there was, I had brought it up as well, because I had some concerns in Quinnen, so we have sent a letter to them, but we didn't hear a whole lot from them. And I do believe, didn't EMO also send, you know, as a concern, as a safety concern?
Well, certainly the deliverers of the service have heard from the municipality of Argyle around these three communities, that I can confirm. But their willingness to invest hasn't shown just yet, and, you know, perhaps, you know, the only thing I can say on that matter is we can go again, and it's probably, I mean, I'm sure council would want us to do that, is to keep going. One of the things that, what the rural internet has allowed is there's, is it allows for businesses to make the business model work, because there's provincial or federal funding coming in, so maybe we can push some of our government partners to try to find a solution of that nature as well. So certainly our MLAs are aware of it as well, I'm sure Zach and Chris are aware of the situation. So I wish I had a better answer, but it hasn't been from the lack of trying on our end, but again, we're at the mercy of the supplier of the service.
And still trying.
And still trying.
We're just having forgotten about it.
It's just, we're not, it hasn't, it hasn't produced.
It's not an easy, it's not an easy task, you know, to convince these companies that they should do that, so.
Yeah, so I hope, that's not a great answer, but it's an answer, so I hope that's.
It's what we have at this point.
Yeah.
I'm just curious, are they ever government funded in some areas where it's being necessary?
I think there's always.
Are there co-op programs or?
I can't confirm that there is a set funding model for them. I think they usually take a look at the business model and they make a business decision. So obviously, the cost to bring the service to that area is, in their opinion, higher than what they can recover, so if we can somehow bridge that gap, then we need a government, then that might make them be more interested, and that's one of the avenues we haven't really gotten to the end of yet.
Right, yeah. Okay. It's great that we have, it's encouraging that we know there are people out there that are actually, they're not sitting here, but they have the opportunity to watch it at home, and obviously some are, and I think it's very good that we have that service and give the opportunity.
I noticed one comment asked if I was making paper airplanes underneath the table, and no, I'm not making them.
If he is, he's not going.
You could have brought that question up.
I didn't see that, I must have missed.
It's in there somewhere.
Oh, okay.
More from our police.
Oh, that, yeah.
Okay.
I understand.
So we have to go in camera, so I guess we need a motion to go into camera.
Don't move.
Move the second. All in favor?
Yep.
Aye.